John.
I could make a motion to approve the Board of Selectmen minutes for March 12, 2019.
Second.
May I adjourn the discussion? You're in on all in favor.
Aye.
Do you want to remind the audience that we are an audio recording?
Thank you very much. Tonight's meeting being both video and audio tape, if anyone in the audience is doing so, please applaud. Stand thank you, Mr. Burrow.
You're up.
What's going, John?
Okay, correspondence, March 19, 2019. The office received a monthly report of SERC for Emergency Management for the month ending February 2019. The office also received notice that the National Weather Service. Skywarn Training.
Go ahead and write it in your book.
Ah, sorry. For Emergency Management, Quaybog Regional School District, who should be sponsoring a severe weather spotter training session part of the National Weather Service, a Skywarn program. Training session will be held at Quaybog Regional Middle High School Cafeteria on Thursday, May 9, from 7 to 9:30 p.m. The session is open to the public at no charge. More information can be found on the town's website at www.warn-mass.gov. As a reminder, in accordance with the Town's General Bylaw, Article 10, Section 12, H, it is the duty of each person in all possessions or controls to remove and dispose of any waste on any sidewalk, street, or other public area, or on any private property neither own nor occupied by said person. Violations are subject to fines. The National Ironness Society, National Junior Ironness Society, and the Student Council are hosting Quaybog's Gut Talent Show on Friday, March 22nd, starting at 6:00 p.m. All are encouraged to attend, and more information will be found on the town's website again, www.warn-mass.gov. And that is it for correspondence.
Okay, Chief of Police Employment Agreement. May I make a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move to ratify the employment agreement with the Chief of Police as written.
Honor.
Is this a public discussion on this?
No.
Okay, well, hit it up to our comments and concerns.
Continue, John.
Okay, I'll go over one more time for those who didn't hear me. I make a motion to approve the Chief of Police Employment Agreement as written.
For one year.
For one year.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, folks. Can we hurry it back? Do I have to wait till seven?
We can do warrant if you want, and then see if any other... Kathy, do you think anybody else could be showing up for them?
Probably not.
You want to push the rest and then...
Yeah, let's go. Warrant and invoice, Mr. Chairman.
Yes. Make a motion to approve the warrant payroll number 76 in the amount of $36,306.63, and vendor warrant number 77 for $99,010.15 dated 3/18/2019.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Also have drawdown fiscal year '17, invoice number 131, CDBG drawdown for PVPC for the amount of $6,000.
May I adjourn the discussion? You're in on all in favor.
Aye.
New business, John.
New business.
Anything?
I have nothing.
Mr. Nardi.
That miss me, sir.
Okay, I'm gonna bring up something that is really unexpected, that if people that were here last week or were here, we got into discussion about the public use of the building downstairs. We had quite a tay-to-tay. We went round and round, and the board had decided that until we could get some sort of a handle on the situation, we're looking to address that situation with some part of a new hire custodian to maintain the buildings, let's see if he can be worked into keeping control. We found out the way the baseline that the board noticed office was not notified or asked for permission to hold a dance. We had seen this on the website. It is a youth dance sponsored by Warren Parks and Rec, Shepherd Municipal Building Gym, which is this building here, for this Friday. Now, this was only brought to our attention after one of the individuals who has always been able to use the downstairs for baseball for years upon years and has never had an issue with this board. And he simply came in and asked why these people are allowed to use it and he is not. So, just FYI, I think the board has always tried to get some sort of consistency, so we don't want to put a kibosh on youth dance, but two questions we had is, one, why wasn't the office notified, one, as to even if the available, the gym was available on that Friday, and two, why that if this is Warren Community Elementary in Westbrook Field, we have two elementary schools, why are the dances being held in either one of the elementary schools? The board is trying not to step on anybody's toes, and as John was very adamant last week, and I have been in the past, that we actively encourage the use of the building, but until we get a handle on it, we are going to ask that the folks that initiated this, see if they can have the dance at either the Warren Elementary School or the Westbrook Field Elementary School, to see if we can end up sticking to some sort of consistency. I'm hoping it all works out for all parties involved, but the board's position is, we can't do it for one if we don't do it for other, and until we get a handle on the things, this is the board's position. So, we are asking that the folks that are in charge of this can switch the location of the dance, and please let the board know of their intentions. So, unless anybody else has anything to add, I just thought it was something that needed to be brought out into the public. Consistency, John?
I'm a firm believer in consistency. I would welcome any of these organizations to come forward, and we can start discussions on how we would control the use of the building in the future. The sooner we get it done, the better off it is for everybody. It's very important.
Did I hurt you anything?
Every time.
Okay, we'll leave it like that, then. We'll hope to get it from somebody tomorrow, okay? Okay, let's go to Reed Street. Kathy, you're up.
Thank you. I just thought it would be important that we get together again and discuss what, if anything, has been going on from your end with Reed Street. I know that back in November, Bill Scanlon notified you that the USDA monies were not available because the town's not an eligible borrower for those funds, and so we haven't really heard from the board since that time. We've been doing some research on our own and have come up with a couple of different issues and different points of information.
Well, that's what we're here for, Kathy, for you to update us, because, you know, basically, the board has taken very little, if any, action regarding. I think we were very clear when we had the first discussion months ago that we're just very, very reluctant to take ownership of this problem. So...
Okay.
You can update us, and we would be happy to assist you if we can, but we are very, very...
So, on January 16th, I emailed the board and informed you that I had spoken with Bill Powers at Congressman Neal's office, and that he believed there was infrastructure funds available, and he wanted someone from this board to contact him. Has anyone been able to follow up on that?
No, I have not, no. Like I said, Kathy, I think where the board's position is, once we get involved, then we're involved, and the board is very, very reluctant to do that.
But what the board doesn't understand is, as individuals, we can do nothing. We have zero power to solicit grants, loans, funds. The state has got tons of infrastructure money. We've been told unofficially by many people, it's there for the asking, but we can't ask. We don't own the roads. We don't have the right to dig up the roads. We don't have the right to start a water project. The town needs to ask. You're our last resort. You're our only resort. We have no other recourse. There's nobody to sue. There's not a lawyer in the state that will take on suing the DEP.
In the country.
In the country. We are stuck. We are stuck by this board's inaction, even though funds are available. Free money, not loans, grants. So, why is this town so reluctant to do anything?
The town is reluctant to take on a $10 million loan.
Excuse me!
No, 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 no.
It's a grant, sir!
The town has not voted.
Folks, folks, one at a time, sir. Go ahead, sir.
What loan? What $10 million loan are you talking about? These are grants that infrastructure is available in the form of a grant.
You're 100%.
Yes! Nobody solicited. Nobody even asked that question or to investigate it further. Why not? We don't have any choice!
Because it, the board is reluctant to assume the responsibility. That's why, sir.
Of what?
Of helping its citizens?
Not on helping its citizens.
That's what you're doing. You're not helping us. I paid $70,000 in the past 15 years to this town, and you're gonna turn your back on me?
I am not trying to turn my back on anyone.
That's what you're doing. I'm stuck. I'm retired, and I'm stuck trapped in my home. And I'm trapped in my home!
I understand.
No, you don't understand!
We do understand, sir.
So, I'm trying to understand why the board won't look forward, doesn't want to accept responsibility.
Because once you accept responsibility, you have the financial responsibility that goes with that.
That's the town to vote on!
What?
That's the voters in this town!
This is a town.
Neither accept or reject. Not you. Not you!
What do you think the town's gonna do when we stop paying, if all of us collectively stop paying taxes to the $700,000 over the next 10 years? Think the taxpayers are gonna be responsible for making that up? You're damn right they are. What's my incentive to continue paying taxes?
So, I have a question. So, all we're asking is for you to ask the state for this grant money. If you ask for that money, how is that, how are you now responsible financially? You're not.
It's an ask.
We can't ask them for the money. We need you guys to ask. Just ask the question. Can we please have some of this, how many ever hundreds of millions of dollars, can we have some of this to correct a pretty serious problem in this town? Why can't you do that?
Poison.
Poison. And please, one of you, please answer me. We've been going to these meetings for years. Nobody will answer these questions. I don't get it!
This is even not the advice of Todd Smola. You've gotta get the town to ask.
Let me ask you this. Where's Mr. Smola tonight? It would be nice if he or Ms. Snowy were here to help with this process, because as you know...
We're nothing.
Legislators that are higher up than us have more access to those funds than us.
This is a joke.
Those grants that are out there...
But you people have to start the process, not him. We're like a ping pong ball.
He is actually a go-between between us and the state in securing those funds. We need their support today, even if we were to entertain that, okay?
But you have to ask!
I have reached out to Richard Neal's house three times in the past three months. I haven't even received a call back. He doesn't even return my call. He doesn't, in my opinion, he doesn't even know that we exist.
Have you guys talked to an attorney?
Hey, hold on. Hold on one second, please. So, a lot of these grants require matching funds, which requires the town's vote also. A lot of this project, if it was to be taken on, requires the responsibility and the help from our water districts, not just the town. They have to take ownership. We haven't had any real support from water on this. There were some meetings about three years ago, Kathy, in February, it looked positive, and then everybody kind of walked away from it. And we could bring it to the town. If it's voted down, there's nothing. If the water departments aren't gonna step up and work with us, or come to these meetings, or want to be a part of this, it's very difficult for the town to take ownership. There's only so much we can do, and like I said, if it goes to the town and is defeated, then there's really nothing. But we need the water departments. We need our legislators to be there to advocate. I had Lieutenant Governor here during the community compact signing, who pledged support for this. Nothing.
But we're being told that they're not hearing from you, from this board. Well, I've talked to Todd Smola.
I spoke to her face-to-face right here. Nothing. Nothing in return.
Okay.
We want to help. Let me hear my water problem. Walked down that hallway, spoke there for 15 minutes, nothing after that. No return.
So, what...
How many times do we ask and call and speak to them face-to-face, and we just get the, in my opinion, a cold shoulder? You know?
Okay, so, in that case, I mean, aside from this scenario, in other scenarios where you're asking for money from the state, how does that work? What's different about this particular situation from other situations?
My personal opinion, this is just me speaking for myself, it's the water issue itself. This state, and this isn't the only community that has problems with water, they don't want to touch it. It's like, it's just like this, this problem that they just like want to turn their backs on it. Other things with building roads and things like that, and you apply for these grants, and there's matching funds out there, much easier than this. When it comes to contaminated water, it is a huge issue, and we're not, I don't feel we're getting any support from anybody above us in the state of Mass. My personal opinion.
Were we talking about the deep wells on Reed Street?
Yes.
Okay. I would talk to a lawyer about suing the town, okay?
We have.
No, but guess what? Guess what? The town dump is underneath all them wells.
Well, we don't.
And that's what polluted the water. The town of Warren's dump polluted your water.
You're not kidding.
We've had many talks.
You need to get a lawyer and sue the town, okay, because the town of Warren is responsible for polluting that water, and these three people are useless.
Well, I have to correct you, Brian, on that, because it wasn't the dump site that was polluting that, those wells up there.
The dump has been polluting the wells.
Please let me speak. I'll let you speak. The research I did said that the dumping of chemicals up there from surrounding neighborhood towns under one ownership's land caused that problem. They took out a lot of barrels, right?
Are you talking above with Downing Lips, that pot?
Yeah.
Okay. That's just a smoke and mirrors screen that you're throwing out. That town, listen, that town dump is polluting all that deep water, okay, in that area, okay? And you're throwing that out because you don't think the town dump that's a thousand times more, larger, with all the stuff that's been thrown in it over 30 years? When I was a contractor 30 years ago, we used to back up with our trucks and throw the stuff out, okay? Where do you think all that stuff went? Into the groundwater, into these people's wells.
Every landfill in the state has the same problem, Brian.
I'm not talking about the state. I'm talking about these people that the town polluted their water. They should sue this town, and you, if you look, you will get a lawyer that can prove what I said.
We haven't been able to find one.
Mr. Nation, you just said it. Every town dump in this state has the same problems. That is the problem. 14D is a chlorinated solvent used in textiles, cleaning clean metal, that's been, that's been, like, wire producing, for instance, and so on and so forth. 14D is not used in a junkyard, and not a junkyard. There's no 14D up there. If it's up there, it's because it was shipped up there on the watch of the health department of this town back in the 80s. They should have, and if there's any up there, which I doubt, was all dumped, the state of Massachusetts dumped it. Wrights dumped it. I'll go on and on, into this landfill. This landfill is 682 feet above sea level. My land is 800 feet above sea level. My well is 528 feet down. Everyone says to me, "Oh, it's the lay of land, the lay of land." I believe my well is down deep enough to be in an aquifer down where that landfill is. I'm asking this board to put tracers in those wells. Tracers, the DP says there's, there are wells up in that old junkyard. I want traces put in those wells. I want to see where this water's going. I want to see where it's coming from.
And we have been told...
You're gonna have to do that independently.
Mr. Corvo.
You don't want these guys doing it. You have to do that independently.
Go ahead, Kathy.
I consulted a hydrogeologist. This is his background. He is a doctor in hydrogeology, and asked him specifically about the depth of our well and the aquifer compared to the dump and everything, and he said it's entirely possible. He didn't have the exact topography to really give us a direct answer, but he said it's entirely possible that the water is flowing from the dump towards our land. It's not necessarily going down towards the river, because the streams, the plumes that come out of it can go in many different directions, and since we're that far deep into the ground, we don't really know where the, where this contamination is coming from. It could be coming from the dump.
And again, Kathy, you know, I'm not trying to sound unsympathetic, but who pays for this? You know, as Dario, as Mr. Nardi said, I think everybody understands your plight, and everybody is sympathetic, but this board is very reluctant to take ownership of the problem, because then we own it.
Pete, excuse me. Pete, could you please share the information you got from the water departments? What'd you meant?
Warren Water District, when I sat down with them a couple weeks ago, initially, when they had the meetings, they brought up the point that they would like to take over West Warren Water District. It is their view, but West Warren Water District was reluctant to go in that direction. And then there was the breakdown with the West Warren Water District no longer talking. I have an agenda meeting, or a meeting next month with the West Warren Water District to talk about what happened, and when you read the preliminary report by Bond, was it Ty Bond? The breakdown in the report, the biggest expense was bringing three phases, wire up to that, to the pumps. Those are the things I think the town should be looking at, to bring down the cost of this project. And the project wasn't $10 million. That was...
That's just interest. You're talking $3 million, but you borrowed over 40 years after you paid people.
Well, $10 million.
An infrastructure grant at $3.1 million is 0% interest.
Right. I was gonna say, I don't know what you're talking about there, but the bottom line is, have you looked at any of the report to see what you can do to cut the cost, to see if it is doable? From what I'm hearing, from your board right now, you have done nothing. You've got a report.
Peter, three years ago, I've been here five years, we've been working on this, okay? It went, after we took that vote, it's gone quiet with us because of the vote that we took. We worked, we secured $25,000 to do the study, we've looked at grants, everything that we've looked at leading into this was all matching funds. What would we have to bring before the town, the taxpayers, to see what they want to do? What commitment do we have in the water district? You're just telling us now that the West Warren Water District doesn't want to be bought out by Warren?
It doesn't.
Warren wasn't about to be bought out. Remember something. They're not a municipal water department.
That's right.
Privately owned, operated.
But in their charter, excuse me, their charter, you have the right to request a water project in their charter. Read it.
Yes, we do.
You do.
We have the right to request it.
Did you?
But we're gonna work with us.
Did you request anything?
We brought them, we brought them to the meetings. We went over this.
Did you put it right and say, "I'm requesting that we do something"?
No, we did a study. We didn't actually say the project was a go. We did a study to see what it would cost, the options that the town had.
But you didn't ask them, actually. You just did a study.
We never picked one of them, Peter. We looked at the study to see the options that the town had.
In the study, there's several versions, but the two versions in there, they're doable.
They're doable according to you, Peter, okay? You know what, I would hate to say this, but if we put a non-binding question for the town, at minimum $3 million, okay, and it fails, everything's over. If the town won't fund it, it's over.
That isn't your only funding source.
We don't make that decision.
Excuse me. The funding source is from the DEP that Springfield uses.
They've washed their hands.
This isn't 100% funded through a grant, Peter. The town's gonna have to have some matching fund.
Yes, it will. They'll have some responsibility.
The town's gonna have financial responsibility.
But you gotta do it. You can't to try to figure out what the cost is.
Until we can commit a financial number to grant applications, we won't get approved. Through the grant application process, the town always has to have their funding secured in order for that grant to be considered in the scoring, in the scoring structures and grants. We have to. So, we don't know. You have to have some idea what you want to do.
That's right.
And then there's no guarantees.
Absolutely.
And Peter, we have approached the DEP. A group of us went down there, it was two months ago, July, a long ago, and met with five members of the DEP, ranking members in Springfield, and they basically told us there was no, no funding available. They didn't want to get involved with it.
Their website has funding on it.
I'm just saying what we were told when we went there, and Mr. Scanlon was with us, Mark, Becky. We spent the afternoon down there trying to get them to agree to do something, right? And we got the cold shoulder. It's not that we, we didn't take the time to go visit them, not that we didn't talk to them. I mean, you can ask for the minutes of that through us if you'd like. You can talk to Bill Scanlon, he was involved. He took good notes. We were trying to get the state involved. We got nowhere with them.
So, Kathy.
Oh, go ahead, Pete. Finish your question.
No. I think if you exert, from this board, to go for, have West Warren Water District, the biggest problem going through them is, they have a cap on their bonding. That was one of the things illustrated in that report from Rural Development, that that was part of the issue. Have you even approached them about changing their charter to raise the cap so you could look for bond, for different bonding? No. I mean, those, it's spelt right out in Bill's letter, right? It is.
Okay. I agree with you.
So, but if you don't do anything, nothing gets done.
Go ahead, Kathy.
I think at this point, I would like to request that this board set up regular scheduled meetings with the water districts, so that we can move forward with the water districts and try to get some resolution here. To have us bouncing back and forth between the boards and, we're not getting anywhere clearly in three years.
So, if I'm not mistaken, last time we scheduled a meeting with water, planning them, we were just kind of here with the Reed Street people, right? We can't make them show up. We've requested their presence at our meetings, but they don't come.
You know, I think you've taken our unfortunate thing that the board is uncaring and have done nothing. We were the only ones that put up money.
I understand that, but that has to help.
To this day, I understand that, but you have to understand that there isn't anybody in the state, including DEP, that wants anything to do with it. This is a hands-off project, and unfortunately, they are waiting for the town to take the responsibility, because then they have some place to go after. You assume responsibility, and that's our reluctance.
What has to be done? A water pipe has to go from the tower, the water tank on the top of Reed Street down the road. You need, is that what, you need a line from that tank?
There's three different options on the plants, but yes, the biggest cost is obviously bringing water lines up to that road.
So, that tank on top of Reed Street, corner of Crouch Road, is what's gonna feed into these people's houses?
Yes, with additional work from piping. That has to come down from the thing that's... The reports are available. They're on public, they're obviously public knowledge. the reports are available, they're on public, they're, they're obviously public knowledge. There are three different scenarios with three different.
Okay, so you're talking, running a, a pipe a mile long, and you guys can't figure that out?
What are we going to figure out?
What are you going to figure out? The highway department hired 10 guys, and they could put that pipe in in like a week.
It's not just a pump, pipe.
Whatever it is, whatever it is, you just, guys, you're not doing what you're supposed to be doing for the town, and you're not, you know, there's ways to do things. And, and this ain't, you're not trying to fly a tongue to the moon, you're trying to help Warren, okay? With a problem that Warren polluted their water, and all you're going to do is run a pipe from the tank to their house, and you can't figure it out, all three of you.
It sounds so simple, Mr..
You can't figure that out?
It sounds so simple.
It is simple, believe me.
Okay, last one.
Last, last thing. Yesterday, I spoke with Cindy Klosky from the DEP, and we talked about having the DEP come back to retest our wells, because they haven't been tested since 2015 by the DEP. She said she would make that motion with her superiors. But I'm wondering if the board could also call the DEP and request the same, to see if they could come back and test. What she explained to me was that if they get four seasons of testing, consecutive seasons of testing, which so that would be once every quarter, and the limits were below the standard, then they could certify that our wells were safe. But they, she said, again, it's a funding issue from the state, so I'm one person calling the DEP and asking for that. Maybe if the board made that request as well.
So, you're making requests that we contact the DEP to have your wells tested again?
Quarterly, for the, at least the next year.
I don't have an issue with that.
They improved at all in the last?
Yes, our levels have gone down consistently.
Okay, because that's because of all the water we've had in the last seven, eight months. It's flushing it out.
Ours went down, have gone down consistently since 2013, when they peaked.
Yep, it's all this water that's flushing out all that crap. But eventually, you know, it's not going to disappear and.
But we need it below the levels.
Right, well, when, when the water dries up, the levels are going to get higher.
Because basically, the problem started when the state changed.
The regulations, yes. Yes.
No, I don't have an issue with that, Kathy. And I don't have an issue with, with setting up meetings in the future, but as Mr. Nardi explained, that, you know, I can't physically go down and make people sit in these chairs. Most of the time, we sit here and we spin our wheels with nobody showing up. Any people that show up are obviously the homeowners.
I can.
But if you can make an effort, you know, to have those meetings set up, and if they show up, great, you know, we can, we can go down and encourage them to attend, we can talk to them prior to that. What train of thought, sorry. Oh, could, maybe perhaps, rather than just making phone calls to, like, Richie Neal's office, or Ty Smollet, or Angobi, or the governor, whoever, state officials and federal officials need to be contacted, we could, you could send an official letter from this board, even via certified mail.
Any of these officials will, will certainly recognize, you know, the town of Selectman versus Steve Berry or Kathy Rugani, and pay perhaps a little bit more attention to something from that level. We're nobody, and that's obvious, because we don't get any help from anybody for anything. We're just stuck. Happy retirement, Steve. I retire next week. I'd like to downsize and move and get on with my life, but I'm stuck.
Perhaps official requests in writing from this board would help.
Okay. Have a big problem with that, sending something off?
Great, thank you.
Okay, folks. I know it wasn't the answers you're looking for, but unfortunately, a very unfortunate situation.
Can I, before we end this discussion?
No, you can end it, sir.
What would it take to get this on a warrant for a town vote? Does it have to go through you, or do I need an X number of signatures?
You can get anything on, you can check with the town clerk, but there is a process that you can get something on the warrant.
It has to be, it's almost too late right now.
Ten, that's all?
But my question is, is what, what would the question be on the warrant?
I want the town to vote on whether or not the town should take action on, to solve this problem of poison coming out of our faucets, or supposedly poison. And I have another question for the board. Do you guys ever go into an executive session?
Of course we do.
When?
It's posted. Every time we go into an executive session, it is posted. That's the state law.
But don't you have to vote on it? In an open meeting law in Massachusetts? Don't you have to sit in front of us and vote to go into an executive session? You can't just go into it?
No, we can be in an open session if the public doesn't appear here in our office, if they're not in attendance.
Yeah, but don't you have to, don't you have to have a, like, a, an open meeting?
We do, we open a meeting first and open session.
But I've never heard you guys vote to go into a, I've never heard you vote in, in front of public to go into an executive session. When do you do it? I mean, that, I think that's a state open meeting law.
It is, but every time we go into executive, we have to, so, I think it was last week?
Last Tuesday.
Last Tuesday, we had an executive session. So, we open an open session, if there's people in attendance, I think Mr. Barrow might have been at some of those. After we move, we motion to go into executive session, it's a roll call vote, and the meeting is closed, and anybody in attendance has to leave. We've done that probably 10 times in the last two months, I think we've had executives. They don't necessarily happen here on a Tuesday night.
10 times, so you've met, this board has met in open meeting 10 times in the last two months?
Easily, yeah, easily. We don't just meet on Tuesday nights, sir, we meet Monday nights, Wednesday nights, Thursdays.
And they're posted?
Yeah.
Everything is posted.
Every executive session opens with an open session.
Right, okay. You just get on the Warren website, you can look all that up.
Okay, promising concerns. Reed Street issue is over.
What's that?
Reed Street issue is over.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, with all due respect.
Yes, sir.
I ask that you abstain from any issues involving the police chief's employment with this town. I have ample evidence to suspect that he could possibly be involved in covering up two assaults that you allegedly committed, one of which you admitted to me in front of the victim.
Well, that's not going to happen, sir, so.
Well, I think it's a conflict of interest.
And why do you say that?
Because you admitted to me that you assaulted a young lady, okay, in front of him, and you, you, I have reason to believe that he's covering these assaults up. That's only in the last four months, Mark, okay? I have ample evidence to show this. And you wouldn't let me speak, you wouldn't let me speak before you took a vote.
One of the assaults, we, we both know what we're talking about. Has there anything come about that?
The one that you admitted to me in front of the victim.
Yep.
That you put your hands on her and assaulted her, that assault and battery, okay? And this chief of police, he's not my chief of police, okay? Because I, I have zero respect for the guy. But he's obligated, when he's a witness to assault and battery, to do something about it, okay? And you sure as heck should not be, have anything to do with his employment at this time.
I think you're a good concern.
It's, it's, it's not a concern, you admitted that you assaulted somebody.
I did not admit any assault.
You admitted in front of me and the victim.
Well, you're wrong.
I'm not wrong. You admitted to me at the car wash.
Yep, I know what we're talking about.
I asked you if you put your hands on her, and you said yes. Okay?
Has the, has the victim filed any charges?
What I'm talking about here is a conflict of interest, because one of them did, okay? One of them, okay? But he's, has an obligation as an officer of the law to charge you with assault and battery, because he was there in that office, along with your secretary.
That's right.
Okay? He has an obligation as a police chief in this town. What did he do? He didn't do nothing. Why? Because you're the selectman. And now you have something to do with his contract? And you're going to look at me like that and say, blah, blah, blah?
I didn't say blah, blah, blah.
No, you're looking at me, you're looking at, you, you admitted to me that you assaulted this lady, okay? All right? You admitted to me that, in front of the victim.
I touched the individual. Touching and assaulting is a very different.
Touching, grabbing her arm, grabbing her arm, she had to have a cortisone shot, because she was painful from, come on, it's funny?
Winter, thank you very much for your concern.
Okay, one touch is considered assault and battery. You admitted it to me, sir.
Okay, sir.
Okay?
Yep.
Okay, so, this is what is going to go on in this town?
Thank you very much.
This is what's going to go on in this town?
Thank you very much.
Yeah?
Anybody else? Stanley?
I have a question on the chief of police. Employment appointment, he's presently on a contract, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, so he's coming off of the contract.
And he's going on, you used the term agreement.
He's currently in an employment agreement and expires June 30, 2019. What we just appointed to was a continuation for one more year under Mass General Law, Chapter 41.
As an agreement or as a contract?
There is no signed agreement between the board and him. We've appointed him for one year under Massachusetts General Law, and his employment will reside under the town's bylaws. There is no signed agreement between us and the chief defining anything, and the salary will be determined after the town meeting about the appropriation is made, and what we will pay that individual.
My only concern is that a contract, there's no contract. And it's not legally binding.
What's not legally binding?
An agreement is not legally binding.
No, his agreement's expired, but he doesn't have a contract, he has an agreement.
Okay.
Currently, and that expires on the 20, on June 30th.
Okay.
There is no agreement moving forward July 1st. It's just an agreement that we're going to appoint for a year with no, have no employment agreement signed. Under, he's falling under Mass General Law.
Can I get a copy of that?
I can send you the Chapter 41 and all the language that backs that up, but that's what it is, and then he falls under the town's bylaws.
If you would slip and put in writing, I would look a copy of that.
Yeah, and then, and as far as note on that, he falls under our bylaws with regards to disciplinary also.
Can I ask you a couple questions, Dario? Or Mr. Chairman, okay? There was a vote taken about six months prior, okay, to his contract ending, whether or not you're going to extend his contract, correct?
I would have to, I've gone to meetings.
You want me to pop out some emails here that I, that I received? How about you, Dario, is that true or not?
So, you're asking, you took a vote?
If you three took a vote to extend his contract, you knew you had six months to notify him whether or not you're going to renew his contract. Did you guys three, you take a vote as to, as to whether or not you're going to renew that contract?
Six months ago, no. We didn't take a vote six months ago. We discussed it, but we didn't take a vote. That's my understanding. We took a vote on the 25th of February, that, was that the date? And then we ratified it tonight. That's the only vote we've taken in the past year, I believe. Nothing prior to.